Good evening, we have a call, a planning board meeting to order. And first up for general information, Mr. Dwyer.
That would be Mr. Cozo.
Hi guys, I am looking to put a farmer distiller for V1 on some land. I sent a letter and a photo of the building. That's a North Bridge Parkway Meadow Road to the east of the Hadley Town Dump.
This is one of those agriculturally exempt micro money breweries, whatever it's called, Paul?
Yeah, it's 19C. When I started V1 17 years ago, they didn't have this license. I would say about a decade ago, maybe a little more, they started this Farmer Winers, Farmer Distiller and Farmer Brewers license. You know, where my current license to import, wholesale and distribute vodka in Massachusetts is $10,000 a year. The license for this farmer distillers license is under 100. And so they're really trying to promote local agriculture. And for the last decade, I've been growing Spelt and Hadley, mostly by Alan Zahouski. So I have some growing right now, about two acres off of Bay Road that I use in Poland for my vodka. It's 100% made from Spelt, so I would like to use that farmer distillers license and open up something here in town.
There's, there's no water, you know, of course, you know, there's no water there. You'll be putting in your own well?
Yeah, I contacted, I actually got a quote from Gila Her Enterprises to run water from the greenhouse there on Cemetery Road. It's 1,600 feet to that property I'm looking at, but it's really not cost effective. So I've spoken with three different well companies. One of them don't quote me on the name of it, but he seemed like, well, he's done a lot of work in town, including some industrial uses, and he seems very confident said 99% he could go down between 250 and 300 feet below the bedrock and get water.
Well, as you know, it's near the dump. And that dump has been there for as long as I can remember that. That's a long time, but so if I were in your shoes, I would have it tested or?
Yeah, so I actually, the Freedom of Information Act, because there's some testing, things that are done already by the town, because I'm looking at property number two and property number three. So right, right directly to that fence there. So I was waiting to hear from the DPW, because they conduct tests there to see kind of exactly what's going on on that side. So I asked for that information last week. I guess I'm supposed to get 10 days to get that information by, and I'm also, you know, prior to closing or any of that stuff, going to get the environmental on that land.
So is any of this Spelt being grown here, or this is just the distillery?
Well, the whole point is to have the Spelt road on that location with the, with the distillation. So I would, it's the positive on two parcels. Parcel number two is 1.83 acres. Parcel number three is 3.3 acres, so 5.13 acres for two parcels. My, my current projection, I sent you a picture of the building, is 3,000 square feet. So, you know, I would say over four acres would be growing Spelt all around the property.
What do you, what do you grow? I mean, what do you distill it out of?
Yeah, so most vodka is made from either corn, barley, rye or wheat. And Spelt is a wheat, it's one of the ancient varieties. So it's very similar to wheat, but it has some qualities in it that gives it a more mellow taste and flavor. So all the Spelt that I've been growing in Hadley for the last decade is all organic. Alan, I work with Alan, we use no pesticides, and that's kind of something that we're proposing. Proposed location. The other thing is I'm buying the land from Joe Chakovsky. He has cherry trees across the street, fruit trees, blueberries, raspberries. So I'm going to be doing some local flavor, proposing some local flavor infusions there also.
Are you gonna be buying it from Lenny Blight too?
Yeah.
Yeah. He was my first friend.
Okay.
Five years old, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, so Lenny is the 1.83 acres that's directly next to the dump. And then Joe's is next to his. So we both secured a deposit on both them, you know, with the understanding, I get all the approvals and that the land isn't really polluted.
So I guess we're not going to be having a dog pound out here, huh?
Well, the dog pound is more east of that, Mike.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah, that's the next one over, that's number five, so that's to the east of that, so.
So is there going to be any customers coming there?
Yeah, so, yeah, Joe, so as part of this farmer distillers license, I can have a tasting room and sell bottles directly so that consumers can take them off, off premise.
Do you like to grow any more Spelt in Hadley besides what you're growing now?
So I'm probably gonna need about, depending, in the letter I sent to everybody, we can do 15,000 liters of vodka a day in Poland. And, you know, again, I finished that in 2019, so this is not going to be anything close to that. This is more for testing and for product development. But you use about three pounds for every bottle, so I'll definitely need more than three or four acres that I'm going to have growing. So I've already spoken with Joe and Alan, you know, they're ready to do some more things. And the state's very obviously high on having, helping farmers, but also organic farming.
Mr. Maximowski, question for just, you know, this is, what, what are we reviewing right now? I mean, if we say, yeah, that sounds great, do we have another chance to say how much traffic are you gonna have and things like that?
No. He's agriculturally exempt, Mark, so he doesn't, he's coming to us as a matter of courtesy. Let us know what's going on.
Okay.
But it's just, it's just like the farm stand that we're put up for Barstows and those guys. They come to tell us what's going on as a matter of courtesy, but the planning board really doesn't have much say in it. As long, he's just gonna comply with state code for his process and sales. And of course, building code, plumbing code, those kinds of things.
And so Paul would come back to us just for like signage, that's it?
That's about it, yeah.
So I think what we would like to do though is, so the farmer distiller is chapter 138, section 19E, which allows the state to issue the license. But I think that you also have to look at 40A section, I forget what it is now, that sets out the agricultural exemption. And you'd want to be sure, in fact, let me just pull that up, so I'm sure what I'm talking about. You'll want to, you'll have to go through that formula to be sure that you qualify under 40As for the agricultural exemption.
Oh, for the certain percentage of products.
Are you gonna be selling any other products besides vodka?
No, just V1 and V1 stuff.
Now, Bill, if, as you are aware, that the neighbors wrote a letter not too happy with the proposed dog pound, what would be their route to challenge the issuing of a permit, building permit? Would, would it be challenge the building inspector and then it go to ZBA? Yeah, I think it'd be challenging the issuance of a permit. But, so, Paul, the reference is chapter 40A, section three, which sets up the agricultural, sets out the agricultural exemption. Although 40A was not updated, because it talks about sale of produce, wine and dairy products. So there's, there's a little disconnect between 40A and 138. But there is a kind of convoluted verbal formula in 40A, section three, that establishes what needs to be done to, to qualify under these. So it's worth having your lawyer look through that, help you parse through that and be sure that you are in fact eligible.
Section 40, 48, section three, Bill?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's the, it's a very clumsy formula. Part of it is whether you are using your own land, part of it is whether you are using produce purchased elsewhere in Massachusetts. And as I said, there's a disconnect, because it talks about wine, but it doesn't talk necessarily about distilleries. So you may qualify for the farm distillery under chapter 138, but not qualify for the agricultural exemption under chapter 40A. That's something that's gonna, some point down the line, someone's going to ask your attorney to prepare a zoning opinion. So you might as well work that out, work through that now, so you're sure. And then to your question, Joe, I'm not sure that there will be, there certainly may not be a public hearing venue. But yeah, I haven't looked through the, to see whether the ZBA has a role and might have a role in here. It is a bit further, it's a whole lot further west than the proposed dog pound. So there's that.
Yeah, and when I, when I look through the 138, the farmer's distillers license, it really emphasizes using ingredients grown in Massachusetts. And of course, where this location is, it's been farmland for, I don't know, many years. So this is going to be farmer distillers license, and I can't get that license unless I show them that this is what this is used for. So I'll look into the 40A, thank you for bringing that up.
Okay. Well, good luck, Paul.
How should I proceed with all this? Come back with some of these findings or?
Well, I mean, once you contact and you find out exactly what you're exempt from, just kind of come back as a general information, let us know what's going on.
Okay. Very good, thank you guys.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Dwyer.
Mr. Reiser.
Thank you. Is it possible to revisit the very small subdivision on North Maple Street that we talked about several weeks ago?
Well, it was, you did bring it in late, so we can quickly talk about it. But I hesitate to give it a yes or a no tonight because of that. Otherwise, we're gonna have, lead ourselves into, well, you did it for Randy, we would like to get the same courtesy and stuff like that, that's all.
Understood, no problem. I'll just go over what I've done and then we can meet again at your next meeting. So all I did this time, I cut everything down to two minimum size lots. It's the properties in the aqua first, we need 40,000 square feet, we need 200 feet of frontage and 150 foot box to fit in, and all of that complies. So basically, I've got a little bit, about two acres worth of land between the lots and the road. And there's almost 18 acres that would be restricted, conservation restriction, APR, whatever it would end up being. Last time, Joe asked about the land to the north, so that is owned by the Valley Land Fund. I didn't see anything where they had put it in an APR or anything, but if they own it, it's not gonna go to developer. To the west is owned by Chang Farm. And that particular piece does not have any road frontage, so I don't anticipate that would be built on in the future. So this would make a very nice, big, bigger, non-buildable area down there. So I'm just curious to know if, since I've cut it down, I've talked to my client and they asked me to come back and see if you'd be willing to entertain two instead of three. So that's what this is all about.
Unofficially, I like this one.
You know, and unofficially, this is kind of what the very small subdivision was intended for. Yes, you could have, you know, the two lots and you are dedicating a lot of open space. So we're still maintaining a significant amount of open space. And the other question, what is the Valley Land Trust? Randy, that's not Kestrel or associated with Kestrel, is it?
No, it's a separate entity. And I don't know, I don't know much about them, I know they exist, but it's not Kestrel. And they bought, I did, I noticed they bought it at foreclosure when the Young Farm went out.
Okay.
Do I have any other unofficial opinions?
Well, two of the other, two of the other members were in favor of the, of the multiple, the three lots. So I doubt they're gonna be against the two lots.
Okay, so then I will come back in two weeks and we'll discuss this officially.
Very good.
Thank you, thank you gentlemen, have a good night.
Thanks, Randy.
Yep.
So Mr. Corvitz here for the, the ZP Battery, which we'll discuss in a moment. The only other person I have here is Jerome.
Yes, hi.
Hi. General question for the planning board, or are you with someone else?
The homeowner was supposed to be on here, as well as my engineering. But we can proceed if you want, and then if there's any additional questions, I can reach out to them.
Oh, you're the administrative review for the 11 Birch Meadow?
Yes.
Okay.
Want to take the, Kelly, the, yeah, the, what you call it, the map off here, whoever has it up?
Oh, okay.
We'll see you, so we're nowhere, Jerome, can we see you as long as you're closed, so we know where we're talking to?
Oh, yeah, 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 hold on.
Thank you.
Hello, hello.
So the administrative review is next on the agenda, and that means we have nobody else for questions.
Um, no.
Yeah, we can talk about the administrative, administrative review, because that's not set at a particular time. So it just, once the meeting opens, so we can go with that.
Well, I have it down for, under the public hearings, at 6:45 anyway, so we're all set.
Yeah, well, 6:50, so we're all set anyway.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that is admin review, we'll go 11 Birch Meadow. Let me see what I have from this.
That was a ground mount solar?
Correct.
Yeah.
Small scale.
All right. So I know we had plans sent to us.
Yes. A whole bunch of them.
And I would bring some of them up, but I'm, apparently I didn't download to my waiver folder. So who would I have, who would have sent the plans in?
I sent the ones electronically, and the homeowner actually dropped off the physical.
Okay, so what email, what email did that come from?
Uh, let me double check that.
And what date was that?
Probably his.
Yes, most likely from me, Jerome.a@empowerenergy.co. And that should have been sent on our last meeting, I think it was January 4.
Okay, yep, I got you here.
Okay.
And I'm going to download these now and corrections. So there admin review. Okay, so we'd probably like to look at the ground mount plan set. Well, I'll get all four of them up. So let's see. Might as well start with pre-design. That didn't work. There, so this was the pre-design, which is a two-page document showing where the field is going to be in relation to the house.
Correct.
And just a couple of other variations on that, I guess.
Yeah.
So let me see if I can get it there, that's a little more manageable. And the next item was the Horizon Report. Not sure what that was.
These are actually the drone pictures of the area.
Okay. So
these panels will barely be visible from any street, is that correct?
Correct. So if you see right there where the van is, that's to the right of that van, that's where the proposed ground mount will be.
Okay. These are gonna be the tiltable ones, they're gonna be fixed?
Fixed.
Fixed.
Well, actually, there should be a plant set here that indicates that, hold on.
Okay. These are just gonna be sitting on metal poles, dropped, stuck into the ground, correct?
Correct.
Standard, okay.
Okay. So
It will be, there'll be a tilt on it.
There'll be what?
There'll, there'll be a tilt.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And one of the documents I sent you actual, is the actual plant set of the ground mount.
Okay.
Like doing it that way, so let me try that again.
That's all going to net metering, or is there gonna be any battery storage or?
Net metering. The customer does have an option for battery storage in the future, but he did not choose that this time.
So this shows the, the tilt, which is a relatively modest 20, 20 degrees?
Yes.
And what are the length and width dimensions of the, I didn't see that.
I think it's in the first page.
Of the actual array?
It doesn't seem to have a, unless it's in the design over here.
Overall beam length is 33 feet. Let me see.
34 foot nine?
Yeah, 33, I can't locate, 33 something.
Overall array, east-west dimension, 34 nine.
Yeah.
And what was the north-south dimension?
I'm looking right now.
Oh, it's a six by five, yeah.
Probably somewhere around 20 feet.
Yeah, I can get the exact measurement from the design team, but yeah, it's approximately 120.
What's the size of each panel?
It's right there, module size underneath the model, module model. So it's 40.87 inches by 69 inches.
Okay, so it's three and a half by just about six.
Yeah.
350 watt modules?
Yes, 350.
Okay, and there's one more set to look at. So that.
And then that's cabled underground and comes up to an inverter on the house?
Yes, yes, on the next plan set that you'll see, there'll be a trench to go from the ground mount to the house.
Are these have micro inverters or single, or just a, just a set of inverters?
Set of inverters.
Okay. Just curious. Just out of curiosity, why not micro inverters of each one?
For this one, the customer chose a particular brand. And for this brand is just one inverter, SolarEdge.
Okay.
But there was an option if they wanted to go with the micro inverter.
So looking at this, and if I can get my mouse there, you could just see it as a little crosshair, and that's roughly where it's going to be.
Correct.
So potentially, the only person who is going to have to look at it is the neighbor across the street. Or anyone else who, well, maybe one other house can see it, but generally, it will be out of the way.
Correct.
All right, let's see. You'll be surrounded by a fence.
Do they have a fence?
So that's my question for you guys, does the town require a fence? Or, okay.
Town does not require a fence.
Okay, so if that's the case, we can do it without Okay, so if that's the case, we can um, do it without the fence.
Yeah, because it's gonna be high enough to mow underneath and keep it neat and clean.
Correct.
I was gonna, I was gonna ask why the fence, because I mean, unless the unless the homeowner wanted it, but it's not required.
Yeah, so uh, most towns um, that we've had ground mounts in um, does require fence. Um, security fence. So when we, the plan set was put together automatically, they put a fence, but we do have a second. Um, plan set that shows no fence.
Yeah, I mean, if this was a large ground mounted solar array, would be quite, would require a fence. But for small homeowners type, we don't require it.
Great. That's less cost for the homeowner. They'll be happy about that.
Well, it's easier to maintain too.
Yeah, yeah.
And here.
See how grassy that area is.
Here is the trench.
Yep.
I'll accept that as. Being fine labeling.
In primarily, the reason for this particular hearing was that so people would not set it. Adjacent to the to the street, so it would impede. Site. Visual impairment, you know, getting in and out of your driveway, etc. But this is far enough back, so. No problem.
Perfect.
Okay, so uh, let me go through the checklist. Uh, it's been sent out for interdepartment review to the Building Inspector, Conservation Commission, Fire Department and Police Department.
Correct.
Um. And that was, let's see, uh, Jim, that was sent probably like the day after the uh.
Oh, yeah, that was sent a couple of days after. Well, 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 it was this, it was sent more than thirty-five days before this meeting.
Okay. We're within time to do our decision. Got the right number of documents. Uh, the plan shows everything. Required by the bylaw. You have the solar system specs. Electrical diagram. Contact information. And. Not a tower here, so that's not applicable. So the electrical schematic. It's not building mounted, so we don't need that. Uh. Insurance wouldn't. Um, the owner has site control. Do we have any documentation? What it's what stage in the process do you notify the utility that um? You're going to be connecting?
Uh, we've already started that process. It's an interconnection um, application.
Very early on, Mr. Dwyer, that's done.
Yeah.
So there will be no clearing here. Um, we don't need wildlife corridors without a fence. And um, setbacks fifty feet from the nearest property line.
I would say so.
Okay.
Yeah, well about, well beyond fifty.
Okay, so that satisfies all the check-offs on the administrative review.
Yay, so. What's the next step?
The vote. We'll vote, make Mr. Dwyer make a motion, we'll vote. And uh, there's no appeal periods. You can go right down to the building inspector and. Do whatever's next.
Perfect.
I'll make a motion to grant administrative approval.
Okay.
Your motion in a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Um, you're gonna get that motion on, Mr. Dwyer, you want me to do that?
Um. Sure, I have a sort of a simplified version of it that I'll send you.
Okay.
But.
Okay, that's fine. So then I'll go out to the building inspector for the next couple of days. Um, in the meantime, he's, we can, if you, if you go for it, say you'll go there tomorrow. Just let him, let him know he could contact Bill and myself if he wants to, the official word that it was approved. And you can proceed whenever you want to proceed with the time.
Don't be in a rush, he's on vacation.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's not, it's not on the calendar to be installed yet, so we have a little time here.
Yeah, I mean, you got. Quite a few uh, there's anything, I got a solo on my house. I got two, I have two systems. One eight years ago and one last year. So, yeah, as you well know, there is. A mountain of paperwork to get this through.
Oh, yeah, multiple departments. Well, is that it, gentlemen?
That's it.
That's it.
Perfect. Thank you so much for your time.
Good luck. Next, Mr. Dwyer?
That would be the public hearing for ZP Battery.
Okay. See, uh. I guess you're requesting in a, well, this is a continuation of the public hearing on a battery. And everything was pretty much all set for that project. Except to get an opinion from town council if it is indeed a permitted use. And as you know, we got an official, an official opinion from town council. And it is not in compliance with our zone by law for solar arrays. So. Um, the applicant, I believe, is requesting the extension so that they can review it with their attorneys, which is fine, no problem. And the next step for us would be to decide if we want to. Propose something at the annual town meeting to amend the zone article on solar to allow batteries. But in the meantime, we can take up, you have something to uh. You want, you want to talk with it to Mr. Corbett?
Uh, I was just gonna sign on here. Uh, Bill had mentioned uh, maybe discussing about a little bit around that amendment. Um, and I had some input, so I said I'd sign on in case you guys wanted any input.
That's fine. Um, I'm sure we'll grant your request for an extension. But in the meantime, I mean, I don't have any opinion one way or the other to pro- propose to permit. Uh, or not permits batteries separate from a solar battery site. What I would like to do is have each of us do some serious research to find out. Pros and cons on batter, simple, on plain battery storage sites for electricity. Because I just don't know if it's a good idea, not or a bad idea. I mean, I know there's some good ideas about it. Um, I'm sure there's gonna be something out there opposing it, but you know, factually. What may not be good about it or. What is factually good about it? So um, we need to find that out.
And would it be, would it be as simple as amending the solar? Bylaw regulations, because this is not, nothing to do with solar at this point. It has to do with taking energy from the grid and storing it, which is not solar related.
It, it, I think would be, I think we would be amending the solar bylaw to allow this use. As a separate, as a separate standalone batteries on the site. On a site rather.
I think Jim's point is well taken. Rather than try to. Come up with something rather quickly, I think we all have to do our due diligence and become better informed as members of the board. Before we put it before a town meeting too, so. We've got to inform ourselves. So, good suggestion.
I see that we, we are approving these anyway. We've approved several as um. As a supplement to a solar field, so. It's not, the question is not whether batteries belong in town or not. Uh, you know, the uh. The fact is that they're here. So uh, I think it may just be as simple as. Uh, some de- definitional change um, to to include these. Um, a- as if they were part of the so- solar. Uh, solar energy development process.
Yeah, and some insight on that if you'd like to, but go ahead, Mark, sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, obviously, the argument for battery storage in general. For the environment and you know, you know, the, the energy. Network is is strong and it's just. Site-specific, how do we feel about it? And if. If we're gonna allow it in sites where you couldn't, you know, have. The solar generation. What does that mean? I mean. In your case, you happen to put it out of of the way in in a gravel pit. But could my neighbor put one up, you know, or you know, could someone do it next to a school? I mean, you know, there's just a lot of. Um, I think in my mind, without getting into the research end of it. If it's. Connected to the generation, then there's usually an open space. Um, and it's often been separated from other uses just by the nature of. Where it's being put, but um. And that's just the first off the, that's just my, my first concern of that. Where can it go? And do we need to amend that language if it's not directly connected to solar? Because I see Mike's point. You know. Um. Ever Source could start. Putting batteries all all over town that they generated power from coal, so. It's uh. It's interesting, safety and philosophical. Question, I think we have to grapple with.
To grapple over the aquifer protection district as well, so.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure we even want these if it's gonna be a large facility in the aquifer, no minute, no matter how many precautions are taken. As the, as the opinion said, this is not to say that it wouldn't be allowed as an industrial or whatever the quote was there.
I mean, that's why I'm saying, we need to look at this. And do some research and find out some more information, because you know, we're all. To be very honest, the five of us are shooting from the hip. Mr. Dwyer thinks the zone thinks is a simple definition. I, some of us may agree or disagree with that. You know, we, we need to know what we're talking about is what it comes down to.
Yeah, understood. So like, I just give you a little insight. Um, so I've been working with towns like yours um, throughout this process.
Uh, could you name some of the towns?
Yeah, absolutely. So right now I'm working directly with Lancaster, Mass. Um, on amending their solar bylaw. Um, for the addition of, it kind of to Bill's point, um, is we are amending their solar bylaw. Um, as this is. A renewable energy, um, and it's, it's because of the solar, so it's, it's coming in in the way that the state reg in the state program is written. It is to absorb the solar energy that is on the three-phase feeders currently. So a lot of this has to come from the electrification of the grid, um, in in working to. Utilize the renewable energy in which we have that we can't rely. Go to a renewable energy uh, facility like a solar field and say I need that power right now at seven o'clock at night. And with the gas peaker plug or a coal. Um, so the point of these battery systems is to come in on three-phase lines that currently have solar, so. Typically in towns, we look at historically, where have you allowed solar? Um, and. Tried to allow it in those zones, not saying that you have to allow a million of them in in that zone, but. Just to be able to allow a battery to connect to an existing feeder that has solar on it already. Um, so that could come in a form of, we'll allow it in this zone, but only. Say two systems can only be allowed in that zone or three, whatever makes sense for you guys as a town. Every town's different. Infrastructure.
You said that you were working with other towns on this. You've mentioned Lancaster. What are the other towns?
So I've worked with Lanc, I'm working with Lancaster currently. I've previously worked with Anethol, Mass. Um. We've worked with Charlton through our smart, smart portfolio um, to get batteries into their bylaws as well. Um, and Southbridge as well. I've been talking, well, already permanent projects in there, um, but we've discussed the. This as a use in the bylaw prior to that.
What's the life of a battery?
Uh, right now, you're seeing about twenty years on batteries. Um, and.
Oh, that long?
Yeah, yeah, about twenty years on, on the lithium iron phosphate technology or the chemistry rather. Um, some of the heavier metal ones, they're, they don't last quite as long, maybe fifteen years. Um, but generally speaking, about twenty years.
So how many towns in Massachusetts or and or cities have these type of battery storage facilities now? That are drawing from the grid?
So right now, you don't have them implemented as a standalone system. This is a new program in the state. This is a directive from the governor's office and the higher-ups um, to to get ready for offshore wind. And that's really what it's all about at the end of the day is making. Making sure that that power from Martha's Vineyard can get throughout the state of Massachusetts, and that's. That's, that's the long-term goal of this process, but right now we're at, we're at the SREC one phase of batteries, if you put it in solar terms.
But Ever Source approach you or did you approach Ever Source or not or?
We submit an application. It's, it's a, it's a generation application just as a solar application is. Um, and they, and they review it and through their, their whole processes as if it was a solar field essentially, it's a battery storage. So they're, they look at it as a generator. It's not considered anything else besides generator.
Now, I mean, all batteries leak. You even get your dry cell, nine, your, your triple A batteries, for example, do leak. I'm assuming these batteries would leak as well if something happened to them.
Battery doesn't really have anything to, this type of battery, I should say, the, the lithium iron phosphate that we we're using doesn't, doesn't have anything that would potentially leak. Um, it has a small amount of electrolyte in it that makes it so the protons can go back and forth. Um, nothing detrimental to any water runoff. Um, that's been fully tested and vetted through uh, multiple third-party uh, people. Uh, there are systems that, so in going back and talking about the aquifer, there are abilities to do air-cooled systems instead of liquid-cooled systems in which. Doing here in this case, um, I know we've liquid cooled, but we beat ourselves up about infinitely about that and just worth. It's not worth it for anybody. Um, so there, there is still options to do air-cooled systems um, out there. Um, it's just becoming more of an outdated technology, but a lot of your. Older technology with your heavy metal batteries, yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a hazard there with, with a spill. Um, I'd say spill, but it say that there's a fire and you have a massive amount of water getting put on. There, there's hazards there with heavy metals being introduced to the wall for sure.
Yeah, lithium's used for bipolar disorder too, which may help some of us on the board. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not looking for, I'm not looking for any, I'm not looking for any confidential information on this question, Mr. Corbett. But on a solar system, how you get paid is pretty obvious, but how is the financials on a battery system work?
It works the same way. Uh, the.
It does.
Yeah, the, so this, instead of it being an SREC one program, an SREC two program or the SMART program, this is the next step. So this, we are in the clean peak energy standard now. So that, that program, you get clean peak credits. So just like your solar field uh, with your SREC credits, um, you produce it during a time that you need it, you get bad credits, however it might work. Um, with this system, if you one can co- co- locate with a solar field, you can apply for the credits for that. Um, or you can be uh, coincident where you're charging when solar is producing. Um, so that would mean that you'd have to be connected to a three-phase feeder that has solar production on it currently. And you would be charging during the window in which that, so those solar fields are producing energy. Now, it's not foolproof. It's not to say that some power might be coming from a coal plant, but when you think of it in terms of electricity and water, saying. I'm gonna take this electricity from here, it's gonna fill back up. So in the way that the program's written, the charge windows kind of dictate and kind of. Identify the fact that it's charging from solar. Granted, we all know that that proton's never the same even before it comes. So you'd never be able to say that even protons coming from the solar side into the batteries that's on site, it's not the same. So it's never gonna be a proof and situation where it's charging a hundred percent um from solar. But the way that it's written, in the way that the state has guided the uh industry into implementing the battery storage is that. You're charging during times of solar production or wind production, and you're discharging while those two are offline.
So if you had a, if you had a solar system and a battery system, you could essentially, I hate to say, but almost like you could double dip.
Um, the way that the program works is no on that, because the solar would be coupled behind the meter um of the solar production. The only letting out from the battery essentially. Um, so there's no double dipping necessarily, I guess. In a way, you could kind of think of that as somebody else is making money and then you're taking that energy as well. And then you're putting in the battery and putting it back in, but that is the purpose of the um of the state.
So 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 if you had a battery.
Massachusetts, excuse me.
If you had a battery system and a solar, would you be, would you get any more for it if you charged the batteries during the day? And not put it into the grid and then let it go at night?
That's when they would want you to charge the energy. That's the point of the storage, is to is to put it in the grid when it's needed. Um, I'm sure there's perks that go along with them. I wasn't too much involved with our SMART portfolio, so I don't know the ins and outs of the economics there. Um, but I would think that you have an adder um for having the battery.
Okay.
Massachusetts is, I believe, the second highest uh electricity cost in the country behind Hawaii. Will will this bring the cost of electricity down or is it irrelevant? It's not gonna help.
I think that's higher than us, but I mean, that was the what we were told with the solar, right, uh, from the start. Um, but I think long-term wise, that that's that's a reality. Um, whether the EDCs like National Grid or Ever Source actually implement that into their billing. Uh, is a whole other story, but the goal is to even make it more efficient. Be able to use the renewable energy that we've developed over the past ten years efficiently and more responsibly. And put it back into the grid in times in which we can actually utilize it. Uh, so we're not buying electricity at a high demand price from ISO to England at eleven o'clock at night. While it's five degrees out in middle of winter, when we can push on the solar field.
Any idea what other states have these type of batteries that are sucking electricity off the grid?
New York is is very far ahead of us. Uh, they have it within the inner cities. Um, we're talking about in the middle of a woods, you know, they have these things in buildings and parking garages. Heavily involved with a lot of development open in New York right now, and that's what they're seeing. But there's, there's plenty of battery storage here in Massachusetts currently right now, too, to get back to that. I know that was brought up a little bit. What you'll see right now is most of the municipalities in the state. Um, they have had an opportunity in the past to be part of programs to add batteries to their substations or their infrastructure wherever they see fit. To even out their grid, and that's almost like a pilot program for our bigger National Grid and Ever Source infrastructure. Um, and Sterling, Mass, and we've had one, we've had a battery, uh, two megawatt battery next to our substation for about. Going on eight years now. We were one of the first in the state. Um, and that was through a pilot program, and we can. We can shut down our entire town and still run our police fire department, um, all of our safety features in the town. Um, for twelve days without any electricity.
So it it wouldn't matter where these batteries were located. It could be Hadley, it could be Plainville, it could be Goshen, Williamsburg. It wouldn't matter, correct?
Plainville's a great area, but yes, um, it 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 matters to a point where you're looking at areas with saturation of solar production. Uh, which is what this program speaks to. This program speaks to feeders, three-phase feeders. They're almost at capacity because we've allowed so much generation on them. And the hopes is to have the batteries charging that solar so you can free up hosting capacities.
How do you know when you get the saturation with solar?
Um, with national, I can't speak to Ever Source, so there's a process for Ever Source that you can submit a pre-application. They'll tell you what's generation on the line. Um, so in this case, I believe there's for, well, I just say so. Road anyway, there's five megawatts worth of solar on that feeder line. Um, so which is why we submit an application for five to Ever Source, but with National Grid, they have this whole database online that I can actually physically see. Of each feeder, and I can click on it and it tells me how much solar generation is on it. Um, and then it gives you the that to tell you how much hosting capacity is left. So the goal of this program is to look at the feeders that are seventy to eighty percent there. To help that infrastructure from needing upgrades. So the biggest part of this is the. The Ever Source and National Grid are constantly upgrading their services, because they engineer it from the start to begin with.
So to explain it in a in a simple term to people who are asking questions, uh. Is this very similar to Northfield Mountain? Are you familiar with that?
Not too familiar. I was just talking with um a building inspector up in Orange about this, though. Um, and he was familiar with it, but we didn't get into the conversation too much about it, but.
They they pump the, pump the water up to the.
Hydro, right? Yeah.
And then they release it when there's a demand, uh, and it's supposed to be a net saving of energy. And uh, the other, the other thing you, this is being sold as a uh. Kind of as a green party initiative, but nevertheless, I think a great analogy that Mark Dunn had was. You're still shipping all kind of energies through the grid, and it's like that tanker filled with milk. Some of it has goat's milk, so you, there's gonna be a small amount of goat's milk you're gonna try to suck out if you're only gonna do it for the. For the green, but it's gonna be, like you said, for coal or natural gas or other things.
And it's hard for for boards like yourself to make that differentiation, um, so.
Not hard for me to make it, excuse me.
No, 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 I'm just saying to to make it so like, can you decide now that you don't want this? Because you you know there's coal coming into that power grid, but the the way the program is written. So that you are charging during solar and there's, believe me, National Grid, we've been working with National Grid for two and a half years on this. And they don't want us absorbing that energy. They don't want us absorbing that coal. The point of it is to absorb the renewables, so they only give us. So each project's different. This isn't like across the board, I can charge whenever I want.
I I think.
I have a couple, I have two questions or one question, one clarification. Part of what Dr. Zagrandic was saying uh. Was the uh, the way uh Northfield was designed to work was in conjunction with Yankee Atomic. Which was in Brattleboro or Vernon, Vermont. With the idea that the uh nuclear plant runs at a constant speed, so it's generating energy. At night when no one wants it, and that's, that was the other part of the idea of use that energy that. Would otherwise be wasted to to pump the water up. But um, the question I had was. Does the utility charge you? You know, when I plug in my iPhone to charge. I am drawing from the grid and I get charged for what? That ever that incremental amount is, do you get charged for what you take in from the grid or just what you give back to the grid?
We get charged for everything that runs constantly and we get charged for what we've taken and we get compensated.
So you you're basically, you're net metering, just like Jim's house.
Essentially, uh, to to an extent. Some projects can operate like that and some can't. Um, it gets very tricky in how these get set up. Individual projects can actually operate, not all of them are the same. Each one is dictated by National Grid, for us as to how it can operate and at what percentage you can charge and discharge.
I I would think it'd be cheaper to charge the batteries at night because you're not using high-priced priced green. Ge- generate electricity. Clearly, the cost of generating electricity from natural gas or other. Fuels is less expensive than solar.
There is an option to, there, there is an option to charge at night through wind hours uh when that does come online. But right now your cheapest electricity that you'll find is your solar production um off of of the three-phase feeders. Um, that's what they're trying to capture is that cheaper production in discharging it back at a cheaper rate than peak load. Um, demand from a peaker.
I think the question you should have posed early on was not, or had, didn't, you shouldn't have proposed that this has something to do with solar. Where it doesn't. Now, you've got this debate going on. Rather, you should have come here and said, look, we want to put some batteries in. They're gonna suck energy from the grid, period.
That's why we're here talking about it, too. Um, but the way that the program is written is that it's supposed to absorb solar energy. So that's how we go.
Who who wrote the law?
Appreciate the fact that you've shared, we've got, we're way off of the zoning part of it, but uh.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to help you guys talk through these things, so.
What was the name of the program? You mentioned SREC and SMART, but now you said clean.
It's the Clean Peak Energy Standard.
Peak Energy.
The these are all, these are all things to learn about battery storage facilities. I mean, when we get, we're off, we're off with zoning articles about it. However, we're trying to learn. The pros and cons of battery storage. What what, how does it work? Why, et cetera? So, you know, this is an educational thing right now.
Yeah, and you know, as soon as Ameris approves a dozen of these and Northampton approves a dozen, then. I might be on board. I don't know. I see Nor- Ameris is uh. Putting a moratorium on solar fields because it's just got out of control.
No, they haven't done it yet. They're talking about it, but it's not going anywhere.
Solar development in the state of Mass is dead anyway.
Pardon me?
Solar development, ground-mounted, hit, large-scale ground-mount solar development, there's zero incentive Massachusetts anymore. It's it's essentially a dead industry right now, and everybody that's smart enough to do it is switching to battery storage.
I go out to the Midwest and it's a lot of um wind out there. They, it it looks like Palm Springs almost.
Yeah, that'll be Martha's Vineyard shortly. About ten miles off, there's about eighteen hundred megawatts worth of offshore wind going in in the next two years. A four billion dollars worth of projects. It's crazy. But that's, that's what's leading up to this energy storage situation in the state, and that's, that's, it it's actually a need not versus not a want. Um, in order to have that offshore wind, in order to make all that viable, you have to have battery storage. So you're gonna see all of those um, all the coal plants right now. They're all decommissioning them over the next however many years they have left to live, and they'll be putting those full of batteries. And those will be battery peaker plants.
Let me ask you something. Let's assume every battery storage facility was located in, say, Texas, everything. How difficult or is it inefficient to then draw the energy from Texas here? Or does it, what what's the?
So so if you wanna, yeah, I can explain that a little bit. So say we have offshore wind in Martha's Vineyard, right? And it gets injected in Brayton Point uh down in southeast Massachusetts. At first point of connection, there's gonna be probably five hundred megawatts worth of batteries there. And then follow the transmission lineup, ten miles, twenty miles, there's gonna be another hundred megawatt worth of batteries there. And a hundred megawatt, throw a softball, keep throwing a softball, and that's how you get it to where it's going, you know, stored along the way. And you can't go too far without storing it because you lose your ramp rates and you lose your energy. So you have to store it along the way into all these bigger injection points throughout the state. And then have battered smaller systems within the infrastructure of towns in order to distribute that energy at an effective way. So that's what we're gonna be seeing over the course of the next ten, fifteen years here in Massachusetts is battery going everywhere.
So this is kind of like Maltse Tong, you know, he was, right? He wanted to. He wanted a uh iron smelter in every backyard, and we know what happened with that.
When you start transmitting electricity, you start losing, there's line loss.
Exactly.
Higher the voltage transmission, the lower the line loss. So you start seeing, somebody's seeing some of these high voltage lines in approaching a million volts transmission. Because the line loss is lower as the voltage increases, as the voltage decreases, the line loss is greater. So it gets very complicated.
Yeah.
And the line losses, the voltages get extremely high, therefore there's, presents another problem.
Yeah, for a private developer, they'll only let you hook up to a maximum of a hundred and fifteen KV. Um, but you're seeing Ever Source down southeast Mass um actually doing three forty-five KV infrastructure. Stepping it down to one fifteen, putting the batteries there and stepping it back up. Um, interesting in how the industry works is, there's many facets to it and it's.
So what's Rhode Island doing or or?
Uh, they'll be doing batteries pretty shortly, too, along with Connecticut, because there's injection points for offshore wind going there as well. So it's all becoming a thing and the whole northeast is is gonna be the poster child for uh battery storage and green efficiency.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Corbett. You've been very.
You know your stuff.
Anytime.
So I will make a motion to continue to March fifteenth at six forty-five.
We'll turn a second, all in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Collier. Mr. Colby, there you are. How are you?
Good, pretty good. Um, so I think. I don't know, Bill is, do you want to use this time to discuss those conditions or how to maneuver through them?
I I just got those out this afternoon, so um, I don't, I just wanted to get them floated out and I may change it. I did not integrate some of the extra conditions from your draft. Um, I'm just trying to, just trying to kick it along a little bit. So uh, no, I don't think there's anything to discuss, except I I hoping everybody thinks it would be a good idea. To have standard conditions, so that if nothing else, I don't have to spend. An extra fifteen minutes reading off all of those conditions, which have to be in the decision. Because if they're not in the decision, someone will try to do something that they shouldn't.
I I think it's a good idea to have standard conditions for everything that we do. And that does make things a lot more clear. I would say it makes it more clear, but it makes it, makes reading of the motion faster.
Yeah, but I I gotta say, I was impressed with the fact that Bill had standard conditions that he read off. Take it simpler would be even better.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I think the way in, when we, when we were discussing this at the last meeting. Um, you know, if if the board is to adopt. This as a policy similar to accepting items up to Friday. Um, that you would in your public hearing, when it came time to render a decision. Say, and ask, you know, and talk about, you know, any specific conditions that you would apply to the. The decision uh of approval, um, and then also include and standard conditions. Um, because you would have already adopted that. So I think um you do have an a a know-how of how to. Go forward, assuming that those are the conditions that you'd want to apply to every decision. So with that said, um, so this is a first stab at kind of looking at. The special permit section. Um, it's, um, I think as you, and I didn't know necessarily how to approach it. So the way that I usually approach when a board is asking about, you know, trying to amend their bylaw. Or look at how a certain aspect is is addressed within the bylaw to try to do as as. Uh, a cursory like diagnostic of it. And so what I did, um, and I'm just gonna share my screen.
Let me enable that.
Um, is. The best that I could was to um. Was to look at. was to look at how special permits are addressed within your zoning bylaw. And I would say that generally oops. You have the specific sections where special permits are required. But I wanted to ensure that because some boards establish a special, special permit section within the administration section of the bylaw. You do address it, but I think that there may be some confusion of the way that it is presented word wise. Specifically as a power of the zoning board of appeals. Elsewhere, you say that the planning board serves as a special permit granting authority for other permits, as you are aware, because you issue special permits. But just some, some cursory items, and, and I guess, you know, one of the, one of the next steps from this is to establish how you wanna move forward. Is it a bylaw amendment to address possibly looking at special permits as its own section within the administration section of your bylaw? And then also how to incorporate general findings as well as how it's alluded to elsewhere in the bylaw, specifically if you're addressing standards and criteria in, and I think I, I draw attention to this, removal of earth products within your section nine where you discuss this. There are no requirement standards or findings. It suggests that you need a special permit to remove earth. I think typically, there would be an understanding too that, that one would need to file some sort of site plan. However, it's not quite clear. Same with uses in the aquifer protection district. The planning board is allowed to issue a special permit for uses there as it would deem appropriate. So I think how I generally presented this is to look at what could appear in the administration section, and that is literally an establishment of what, how a special permit goes through its process. It would also include right here specific findings, because I know the board issues findings when it goes through the process of the decision. That would be specific for every special permit. As you're aware, the marijuana section, how you address cannabis in Hadley as well as solar. You have specific findings in those sections. Obviously, you would include them in the decision. And they're included in those sections of the bylaw because it makes sense there and alluded to as additional findings for a special permit. But these are general for those special permits that don't necessarily have findings. But the planning board or the ZBA would issue special permits. But I think generally, how I've seen it in, in other communities is, is just that, that there's a establishment of a special permits kind of general language in the administration section, not to mention providing the powers of the planning board within that section. But I don't know if, if the board had gotten to review this, but I guess, you know, th- this is a time for, for me to learn if this is the approach that you're looking at, or if there are some specifics that, you know, you'd, you'd want to address within this deep dive into special permits.
I, I like it overall. Right now, our entire special permit section of the bylaw, we're all, both the planning board and the ZBA are piggybacking off one paragraph in the section that defines the ZBA. So I think we do need a sort of a, something in administration that covers both what the ZBA and the planning board will do. And the only thing I, you know, just, I, 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 at a first pass through this, when you, where you have that list of findings, if you could, you know, we're, we're, you're gonna, we're gonna be making, you know, what, nine or 10 findings in there, but you can add another section. Also, any finding specific to the article under which the special permit is authorized.
But Bill and Ken, the state statute has special recommendations for a finding for a special permit and for a variance. And when Ken was referring to findings, that seems a little different than what the ZBA would recommend.
Yeah, this is not a finding in the ZBA sense. This is, these are, and maybe there's a better word for it.
How do we, how do we make it clear? In other words, some lawyer may read it and say, look, this is a, a finding that usually is issued by the ZBA, but.
Active definitions?
Yes, well, I.
Would, would, would there be, I guess the question for the board is, would there be any instance where the ZBA would issue a special permit not reviewing? I feel like these are, to maybe ones that presented with site plans. Because they have to adhere to the underlying zoning, and there is this question of how does it, you know, how is it not detrimental to the neighborhood and alter the character? As well as, you know, some of those other various issues that are related to an actual construction of a building or a structure. I don't know, and, and I, that's a, that's a great question. But maybe it's alluded to when you are actually reviewing a, a special, a site plan in addition to them. I don't know if, how the ZBA interacts with their decisions. I know through experience with acknowledging how the boards of appeals operate in the, the communities that I've worked in. It's mostly, you know, variances. If they issue a special permit, maybe they're light on the findings or the, the, the procedural aspect of the, the decision as well as any conditions that they may place. So it, it really is how it's applied. I, I think that's a great comment. And maybe we, if there's any thoughts to that, you know, the board can share, but maybe we can try to figure out how to address that.
Well, a different, a different term. Bill, is there a different legal term?
So I'm actually, I'm looking at section nine, which is special permits, just to see what, how they. Yeah, I mean, maybe sufficient just to say, instead of finding specific reasons or something like that.
Just a different term, I think, is all we, well, we have to specify.
You know, any confusion with the state statute overlapping what we're saying, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, we, we just gotta avoid that term. That's all. Find it, find it, find, find inappropriate term to use in place of it. That's all.
That's correct. I agree.
But I like what Ken's done. That, that, he's right. I mean, we, right, and then you're, you're right, Bill. We got one little paragraph that we hang our hat on, and for what we use it for, it seems quite a bit inadequate.
So here's the language. The special permit granting authority shall cause to be made a detailed record of its proceedings, including the vote of each member upon each question, or if absent or failing to vote in in such fact, and setting forth clearly the reason for its decision and of its official actions. So yeah, we just, just use a, use a term that functionally means finding without being the word finding.
So if you were to apply, if we were to rename that or find another word for that term, would that term appear in your decision with, you know, if, if those are the types of, let's say, reasons or reasonings or the criteria?
Let me see what I use here. So let's just pick site plan approval. I, I use findings in general conditions. Yeah, so I'm using the word findings. Then it's used extensively in, in court decisions.
Well, it may be okay. I just.
Well, I, you know, in, in a sense, it is okay because the Z, only the ZBA can make a finding.
Correct.
As a freestanding document or freestanding decision. Anything we do under the special permit bylaw is, it isn't a finding. It can't be a finding as defined by the ZBA.
Okay.
The determination.
Oh, yeah. Synonyms include discovery, location, detection, uncovering.
Verdict.
Unearthing. Detection may be a word to use.
I like determination.
Yeah, it might be a good one too. Yeah. Probably better than detection.
I think the. The way I have it so in this draft. So determination is used as the written determination for how a special permit is issued here in this version.
Okay.
Now, what we may be able to do is simply define what finding means for this section.
Should we sweep out it?
Yeah.
Make a decision now.
Yeah.
So I think what we have, what we have to do now is, I think, just let the, let town hall know that, let the administrator know that we, looks like we have two zoning articles that we may want to bring forward. The special permits and the battery storage.
I've got one that I'm working on for, remember we talked about putting a section in that gives the building inspector the authority to remove signs on public properties that are non-conforming? I've, I've been writing something up for, for, to put into the sign section so that he'll have, officially have the authority to remove those.
Okay. So we ask for three?
Three.
Three.
Three spaces.
Ken, have you looked at what other municipalities are, how they're handling that?
With regards to special permits?
Yeah.
Well, as, as I mentioned, you know, this actually came from the work that I did as a town planner, and this is how I had approached with my planning board special permits, because we had established we were working off or in their previous bylaw before, you know, I, I was working with a consultant to establish the role and the responsibilities of the planning board through a specific addition to the administration section. Special permits are similar to the way that it was, that is presented in yours, where it's under the powers of the ZBA. So this comes from that. I think I removed a couple of lines specific to the community that I used to work with. And I established that, you know, there usually is some conformity or some consultation with your master plan. And in the, you know, because what would happen during a a public hearing, especially if you're, if the, the board is aware of the planning documents, that, you know, if the development happens to be in a parcel that may be identified for an open space plan as, as a future, you know, you, use for recreation space or whatever. Not saying that that's gonna, you know, that, that would not necessarily happen, but those are the types of, the, the types of discussions that would be happening in the public hearing. But I think the way that I presented it is that, you know, and I think Bill would agree that maybe this discussion of how to establish a specific section with your administration with just generalities of special permits, also alluding to the various sections of the bylaw, which have some very specific requirements under cannabis or so, solar for additional materials that are supposed to be submitted or additional conditions or considerations that, that are given to with the power of the planning board to condition some of its approvals in those particular sections. This is more general, but establishes that clarifies that the planning board now is, can be a special permit granting authority as well as some general, you know, determinations. I think that we may be using that word, those wordings or findings if we can define that. But I would say that a lot of the communities that I've been working with here in the Pioneer Valley, at least the three that I currently work with, have a specific section for special permits. They've also established rules and response, or role, roles and responsibilities of the planning board and their bylaw amendments. So that's something that, yeah, we can also look at.
Okay, thank you.
Can I be, Jim? Excuse me.
Under the special permit section, will we, if we amend it, we wouldn't include everything we have a special that we're gonna be issuing a permit for, like, you gotta list it, right?
No, 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 no. It's general language, right?
Okay, yes.
Because I think in other, and I, you know, I didn't go to, but my, where I usually look is the solar and cannabis, because usually communities work off a model, and usually in that model suggests that the planning board serves as a special permit granting authority. So if that's established within the administration section of that specific bylaw, then, you know, that's the way it's addressed. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't list all of the special permits. And I wouldn't think that the planning board would want to list all this. That just invites conflict with other parts of the bylaw if you're not doing those reviews.
That's where you have to do, including but not limited to.
Or that, yeah. Yes, if you wanted to present it that way.
Why have we mentioned that? And I'm not, I don't want, I don't want you to do any research on it, but, but have you heard or do you know of any big pros or cons on battery storage for solars?
It's, I was listening to the conversation, and I think it's, it, it's so unique, especially with the, I agree with, there are not a lot of solar. I, all of the solar has kind of dried up with regards to those applications coming in for your general ground mounted solar. A lot of them are coming in for battery. And I, looking at the, the, the the council recommendation that you, that Bill forwarded to the board. Yeah, I mean, I, I would agree that the, this is a prime time to, to start discussing on how to look at this particular land use, because a lot of communities are dealing with how to address batteries, and I think maybe some determinations for volunteer boards that, that are being made are similar to, are, are, they're not taking into consideration those very specific lines that you've drawn upon in, in, in your previous meeting that I attended. So it's obviously you, you're finding a way to clarify that, and I think that's great, and however you, you decide to do that. It's obviously you, you're finding a way to clarify that, and I think that's great, and however you, you decide to do that, uh, I'll be, I'll be following this closely. Um, but I think in, in working with the other communities, they're not there yet and, um. You know, i- i- it is, yeah, I, I don't know, and because there's a big question mark next to battery storage.
What Hadley would be doing would be to allowing electricity to be bred at night. Right, and now. South Hadley and Holyoke have some of the lowest electricity rates in the state because. It's all, they're, they're supplying their own electricity. Is there any way we could write into the bylaw that because Hadley is essentially generating electricity, they should have a preferred rate?
No.
Yeah, why not?
That, we're not a municipal wholesaler.
Well, we're close to it.
Physically close to it.
I would love to be. That it's possible.
I'm trying to pay, I knew what the answer was gonna be, but I tried to, I'm trying to make a point here. Red Basket of Hampshire County with the Commercial District of Hampshire County, and now we're gonna be electricity supplier of Hampshire County.
So Ken, uh, any interest, uh, well, you probably haven't raised it yet, but I'll suggest it, uh, would PVPC like to, uh. Develop a, um, model bylaw for, uh, battery storage?
Um. That's a, that's a good question, and I, I know that I would have the support at least by, of this board. To, to look at it, I mean, to at least, you know, spend some time looking at it, um, it's something that has come up. Uh, you may know, you may not know that we did a solar best practices, I think we were working with, um, Dave Nixon. Um, previously he attended a couple of our working group meetings, but we had eleven communities work on a solar practices best guy, uh. Best practice guide for solar, um, two years ago, um, now, and. The battery section, because that did come up in conversation, it was literally. The, the technology is too novel and we don't have examples. Um, but now, you know, this is happening across, uh, across the state and we're trying to figure out how to best address it. Even just through the, the, the words of your zoning bylaw, but also trying to, to figure out what. Impacts what additional protections, you know, the board may want to, um, consider. Um, I, I heard him, I heard, um, the, the previous speaker say Southbridge. I'll be calling the, the town plan over there, that's where I used to, to work. Um, he was helping them amend their zoning bylaw for batteries.
There, there weren't that many towns, you know.
Yeah.
That come off, you know, Southbridge, Lancaster, you know, clearly these, these. The ability to put these things in has a great deal of value to whoever wants to put it in. And the guy also suggested limiting the number of battery storage fields. In town, so.
Did he say in town or did he say on a feeder branch?
I think he said on a branch.
On a branch, well, clearly, there's gonna be a limit to the number that can be put in town. And I think the town should perhaps look at. Auctioning these rights off.
I wonder if our constituents wouldn't want to hear something like. If you're gonna put in, if you're gonna propose a battery storage without the generation on site. That perhaps it's, you know, it's acceptable or it can be considered and say the industrial zone. Or, you know, business zone, something.
Similar to liquor licenses, there's only gonna be a limited amount of these batteries, storage fields can go in. So, we're allowing someone to make a lot of money. Seeing what the true value to the town is, and I think they should, we should look at having. The select board auction them off, once we decide what the bylaw should look like.
Can we give the mic to, can, can we give the microphone to, to Doc Joe?
Yes, Michael, uh, it, it sounds like it was a filibuster there, you're right, thank you. Well, we're gonna tax it, and the question is, what kind of tax would it generate?
Right.
Oh, is that code generation?
Yeah, that's right.
Well, when it, when it crosses town lines, I think we should ta- tax the hell out of it, but if it stays here, should get a break.
Okay, so Ken, if, if you would get back to us, maybe just drop me, drop us an email. When you get some feedback from your successor. And, um, if PVPC has any interest in, um. He, he certainly will, will have our support if there's any interest in reviving that, uh, working group to. Take another look at batteries.
It, it really seems that this is, is in its infancy, and I don't know if Hadley necessarily is opposed to it, but we certainly don't wanna be the, uh. Scapegoat for it either.
Don't wanna be the poster child for.
Yeah, yeah, and basically getting. As we say in Polish, getting it up to Judda.
I don't mind being a poster child as long as it has the meat in it to protect the town. We've, we've been opposed to chart, post, or child on a number of zone issues. And to be honest, we've been very successful at many of them. So we just wanna make sure that wherever we put forward for this, um, it has the right stuff in it. And that's gonna be the, a bit of a, probably the, where the challenge is.
Yep.
So it's gonna do, that's the research we gotta be looking at. We'll do our homework.
So, uh, but short term, um, wanna get the. Special permit polished up is.
Yeah.
Expeditiously so we can get it, uh, on for town meeting.
Yes.
And we also, uh, they sent around, they just learned today that, uh, we did receive the, uh, district. Local technical assistance.
Yeah, yeah.
For, um. Dollars towards a housing production plan.
Yeah, yeah.
And some guy named Ken Comia is going to be working on it.
Well, I, I'm trying to, um. Um, because I've been doing a lot of housing work. Um, see if I could like tag team with, with another housing planner, so. But I will more than likely be working with whoever, um, when we establish, um, you know, who those. The, the, the committee will be working with.
What exactly is gonna be required by the planning board on this bill, do you know, we applied for, but what, what? Is there gonna be a separate committee or is it gonna be the planning board at Kinnegan?
Uh, I think I, I did the application on the behalf of the planning board.
Okay.
So, um. Together, if, because that was the requirement, the application had to come from either the planning board or the select board.
Okay.
Um, I didn't propose setting up another committee, um.
That's good.
I think that, uh, since we're also the trustees of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund plus. Uh, David Phil and, um, Danley. Uh, there's also the, uh, Housing and Economic Development Committee that Molly Keegan chairs that I participate in. Um, so I, I think we can get input from several directions without creating. A subcommittee. And going forward, looking at our, um, what we have on our schedule, we. We're fairly light, uh, you know, apart from the battery storage, I don't think we have any other. Projects pending. So I think we'll have enough time to. Kick this along as much as it needs to be kicked along.
Good.
Ken, what are the, the top five variables that would be looked at, something like this, the housing production plan? Or is that the wrong, even wrong approach, what are, what are the variables to look at?
Well, I, the way that I've approached it is. Hadley doesn't, right, you don't have a housing production plan, right? Is that, it's, it's.
No, we do not have a housing production plan, we have a housing chapter in the, uh, master plan.
So, I. I think though, the first, the first way that I would approach the project is because the community hasn't had a housing production plan is to. Do the deep dive into the housing master plan chapter, but also with the board. Cause it sounds as if this is the committee with the input from the other, other committees or other, um, individuals. Um, look at. And I'll say this for another meeting, um, but there are very specific things that need to be present in this housing production plan. It's a housing analysis, looking at a snapshot, snapshot of your demographics as well as, um. The housing market and some census data on housing units, the age of units, whatnot. Um. And then looking at constraints to development in Hadley. Looking at your zoning, looking at some environmental constraints, usually that, that information would be coming from an open space plan. Or your open space and, open space and recreation chapter of your master plan. Um, to, to help inform that discussion. Um, what al- what also needs to happen is in order to comply with DHCD, which is the. Uh, approval, um, the body that will approve this housing production plan. Is that you have to have a plan to increase or maintain housing, right? As you know, you are a community with over ten percent. Um, and you are making. You are making strides at maintaining that, if not increasing that number. Um, you've established and are working towards, um, how to use, um, CPA funds among other funds. And your inclusionary zoning bylaw to, um. Put some money in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, how you're gonna expend those monies and, and learn about that process. Um, but, you know, it, I, I can't say that there are any variables because I don't know. Um, you know, every, every community is different on how they approach this plan. This is the first community that I'm working with that has over ten percent. Um, how do you, how do you navigate? The understanding that you are over ten percent and in the next five years, because these have a lifeline of five years. You'll probably still be in the ten percent. Um, your numbers will change because of the new census data. Um, so I don't know, you know, what will, what has happened between twenty ten and twenty twenty. Uh, with regards to the increase of housing production, um, did any new? Did any new units go into the subsidized housing inventory? What has your process been to put those into the subsidized housing inventory to either increase those numbers? Are they gonna stay the same, um, once DHCD issues your, your new subsidized housing inventory? Um, how will we address that? Um. But I think, you know, we'll save that, that presentation of what housing production plan and, and all those other requirements. For, you know, a future meeting, um. But I, yeah, I, I can't really say, you know, I think it's still too early.
You know, one of the demands for Hadley Housing is. Is you math students, cause Dr. Zrogic's point, pointed out many times, you, you. You know, houses have been built specifically to rent to students, and we gotta look at that aspect because it kind of skews the data.
Exactly, it makes housing much more affordable because when you see the last five houses that went up are now student stuffers. You're not gonna get a middle-class people competing with seven or eight students in a house. Uh, so that really skews it, and when they look at the master plan. I hate when people start cherry picking the item number fourteen or fifteen on the master pa- plan list. The number one criteria that people choose why they wanna live in Hadley is because of the agricultural. Open space concept, so we'd wanna eat up all our good farmland to put more. Housing, which the University of Massachusetts has abdicated their responsibility for housing their own students. So those are my editorial comments.
Oh, they're great comments.
That's fine, okay.
That's right.
But, yes, that's enough of this.
Yes.
Yeah, Ken, we'll, we'll, we'll take this up at a future meeting in much more detail as opposed to, you know, just to mention that we do have the. Rent approved for fifteen thousand, and also the, uh. Zoom has been continued from April to what, middle of Ju- July, Bill? So, that's good news, we can continue with our Zoom meetings for at least four more months.
So, uh, Ken, the Conservation Commission, I think, does have an open space plan. Or they've, they've been working on the open space plan, so you can talk to them on that. And there is a specific development constraints. Appendix map to the master plan.
Right. Yeah, that'll be very helpful, um, you know, I think with, as we take inventory of your town documents. Um, just taking note of those, especially if they've been updated recently, that'll be very helpful in the, the drafting of this. Um, you know, just another comment is that there's going to be some sort of, uh, we need to have a. A community survey and a community, some community engagement workshop. Um, so how that, however that happens. Um, you know, if you are, the, the, if the planning board wants to. Explore something, especially in the summer months, um, maybe a second workshop or in the fall months, a second workshop that's in person. Um, that could be something, if, if maybe the first one is virtual, um, just because we, I think we seem to have. Um, some time on our hands, at least for a few months or two, maybe two months, um, while we work on. These bylaw amendments as well as any forthcoming applications, but.
So the tax collector has been willing to piggyback. Um, a brief. Um, reminder to log in for an online questionnaire or something like that. In the tax bills, the, there's a tax bill going out almost all the time, but the, uh. The real estate bills about quarterly as do the water bills. Um. A- as do, and the, the auto excise goes out once a year, so, um. There, there's a possibility for piggybacking something in there, but, uh. We have to check with the tax collector about what the time, uh, what the lead times are for that.
Okay.
It's a good way to.
Last water bill just came out a few weeks ago, so we've got a, the next one probably won't be out until probably, uh, May.
I think that's great, I think that's good timing, um, to. Send out a, you know, a, a reminder for a survey, um, maybe, you know. We can work on those timelines.
The next tax bill should be mailed, uh, April first to, uh, May first. So that's probably a little tight. The one after that will be July, uh, July first to, uh, August first.
Okay.
Ken, do you have any experience in encouraging developers to hop on board with a friendly forty B?
Um, I've only interacted with one, I, I normally am not part of those conversations, so. Um, when I was in Southbridge, we had a relatively friendly forty B, um, they came in knowing that. They had all of these tax credits that they wanted to, um, utilize and, and maneuver through those processes. I know that in working with the ZBA, because they were the ones that had to oversee the comprehensive permit. Um. You know, I think it was a pretty decent process, I know the planning board, some members of the planning board were not as, um, happy or. Um, you know, with regard to that particular developer, I think that, you know, that particular development was, um. There, there were just lots of different perspectives in that particular developer who wanted to develop, um, forty-eight units. Um, in an old mill building, um, but. Those conversations were happening with the planning department, with other town officials. And, um, I think, you know, there were some concessions by the developer to get it to something that more, that matched more. Um, our subsidized housing inventory and, and increasing those numbers.
This is taxes on a local level, as town level you're talking about.
Yeah, I know that there were some, um, incentives that the town council had. Um, allowed for him, but I don't think they were related to the, the housing, um. The housing, uh, component, it was a large, it was the American Optical. Complex in Southbridge, and, um, there were so many other types of development opportunities in that complex. So he was coming to the council for, you know, TIFs and. So he was coming to the council for, you know, TIFs and DIFs and all of those uh various incentives to get some of that development up.
Or just a suggestion, but if you know, if the state really wants to encourage affordable housing, they should look at. Giving developers a tax break at the state level, state income tax level. And that would help, and it would take the onus off the town having to give the tax break, okay, so something.
So i- in fact, we don't give any tax breaks, we've never had to, I think we may even have to get them adopted by town meeting. Um, we just haven't opted into any of those programs.
Okay.
We're the, I think what Ken is talking about it, it um maybe. Uh, tax credits to the developer for putting up affordable housing. Yeah, that do come off of federal and state income, I think there are also, and I think that's the issue with. Uh, the housing over. Um, at the Amish line, the uh, the one on behind Pride, which has recently changed hands. Um, they're, um. I think they got some uh very favorable financing terms from the state for putting up. Affordable and keeping it affordable for a period of time.
Ken, is AO still in Southbridge?
Yeah.
Well, they are.
Yeah, I mean, they're not operating, I mean, no, the company is not still in operation. But the complex still retains the name and, you know, the residents all refer to that, the complex as AO. Um, but I don't think there's any sort of remnants of that operation there. I look forward to working with the board on this, I, this might be um. Well, I think the board will have to determine whether or not. These conversations, especially related to um either findings that as we continue to discuss housing. Um, can happen within a planning board meeting, I know that in working with planning boards. That are working as the committee, also doing a housing production plan. And maybe you have experience with other PVPC staff, I've never, you know, this is the first time that I'm working with a board also on a plan. So I don't know if, you know, there is um. Time outside of the planning board meeting where something, a conversation specific to housing would be favorable. Um, but I think we can cross that bridge when we need to, um, because. We should be having also routine meetings just to discuss the progression of the plan and and how drafts um. Are, you know, um, how you review them um as we continue to work on them.
Ken, I don't have real heartburn over the word planning, uh. I just wanted to make sure that it did not interfere with the traditional wording of planning from the state by law, so. Um, if it if Bill and you figure it's not gonna interfere in any way, shape or form, that I'm fine with it, so.
So we, we, at least until July fifteenth, unless it gets moved again, have the ability to um. Bring a meeting together. Pretty much anytime by Zoom, um. Obviously, there's some posting requirements if more than two of us participate at any one time. Uh, but I suppose there could also be, uh. Yeah, we could put together something that might bring in um. The other two people on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and from. The uh Housing and Economic Development Group have a little summit meeting of that. Core group. Now I can set that up on, you know, obviously it still needs the three days notice because it would be three separate entities meeting. Um, but I think we can set that up pretty easily, it's probably a good way to kick off. The focus on the housing production plan.
Great.
Is Christian Stanley still a trustee?
He is still a trustee. Uh, the. Only requirement is that a member of the select board. Be a trustee and David Phil is filling that role. So Christian is a community member at the moment.
He's also the chairman of the of the group.
Of which group?
Affordable Housing Trust. Okay. So I have a couple of other odds and ends.
Thanks, Ken.
Oh, next meeting with Mr. Cornea.
Oh.
We could do the first or the third, either fit March one or eight or March fifteen, whichever one's better for you, Ken.
Um, the ides in March.
Fifteenth would be good for me, I'm not gonna beer on the first, I don't think dialing it up, but.
Okay.
At two, Michael.
At two, brute.
At two, Michael.
I think that should be fine, the fifteenth with regards to, I I I don't know if that impedes on on your plans for. Zoning by law amendments and the other ones, um, because obviously, you know, you're. We're working on the special permit section, but I don't know if you would be having any other discussion with your other ones that you're looking at.
Uh, if you could possibly get us revised language for the special permit. Maybe the rest of us can talk about it on the first.
I'll do that.
I may have built it, oops.
Get it in by midnight on Friday, though.
Yeah, the fifteenth might be good to kick off this uh. Housing thing as well, because we don't, we don't have much going on, we probably won't have much for that meeting.
Work on something for that, I think that, I think that's a good idea, um, that will give me time to at least formulate. Um, what that agenda item would look like, probably present. It will be a a formal kickoff to the project.
That's the night of the continuation of the gravel pit battery. Right?
Right, but I suspect that they will. Uh, have no, they they have no reason to object to a continuation till after town meeting.
Yeah, I mean.
And that guy seems to be a useful resource. For um what we're talking about.
Right.
So special permit revises by three, one, and um. And for for three fifteen, we'll talk about special permit and battery.
And possibly kick off the housing plan, right?
I think that would be good.
Housing production plan, uh, yeah. So, I missed uh. Christian Stanley being put on the, was that, that must have been at a select board meeting that they.
That 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 was at our first meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And Christian Stanley and Dave Phil were on that, the select one did appoint him to that committee. And the committee appointed Christian Stanley as chairman of the Housing Trust Fund and Mr. Dwyer as clerk.
That was, that was a special meeting other than a planning board meeting.
That is correct.
Well, no, the the uh trustees are appointed by the select board. So, with the five of us, Christian Stanley and David Phil. Were appointed as trustees at a meeting of the select board.
Right.
Then we subsequently had a meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, at which we appointed. As Jim said, Christian is president, Earth uh Chair and uh Mia is clerk. Then we went into a quick vote on the. Uh, advancing money. To the rental assistance fund. And then nothing was drawn from that, so that has been rescinded or it died automatically. Um, and we have not met since then, we probably should have a meeting, but um. There is technically, the requirement is they have to be a member of the select board, they have to be a member of the planning board. And all of the other members can be at large of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Um, so that's how we got to where we are.
Must have missed the invite to that one.
I believe you were there.
Really? I thought you were there, too.
I don't remember Christian Stanley. Maybe this is what happens when I turn sixty.
Well. Now I see why. Uh, I logged you in at five fifty-five, the meeting started at five thirty. So the actual organizational portion of it. Um, that was what we took up as the first item.
Okay. What was that date?
Uh, December eighth of twenty.
Twenty-one.
Twelve eight twenty.
Oh, twelve eight twenty.
Oh.
Oh, yes, okay. Twelve eight twenty?
Yep, that's.
We're supposed to have a meeting a year.
Yes, so uh, I will make a note to uh schedule.
Our twenty twenty-one meeting? Wonder I didn't remember, Mr. Short Term Memory.
Oh, Mr. Stanley, he should be scheduling a meeting once a year.
So that actually it would be. I don't wanna pile too much onto the fifteenth, but if we schedule. If we post for a meeting for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. For the fifteenth. We can get, knock that out of the, check that off, too.
I think that's too much. I think if you're gonna, if you're gonna schedule a meeting for the Housing Trust Fund, do it for the first for February, for March first, Bill.
Okay.
Because uh, depending how much we get talking with Ken and especially and the other special permits and the other stuff. Uh, that's gonna make a. Extremely buried meeting on a fifteenth.
Okay. So I will post for a simultaneous meeting of the planning board and a meeting for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for March one.
That would be good, thank you.
That was December eighth, with, so that would have been a second Tuesday instead of a first, so it was not a planning board night.
It was not a planning board night. This, and that's probably why you were late, because you had something else.
Yeah, I probably had to be reminded, it was off my grid. It was probably my piano lesson night.
Okay, is the select what have a meeting on the first, Bill?
Um. Yeah, they do probably, but they're probably not meeting until uh.
That means David can't, it won't make it.
Right. Okay, well, I made a note to schedule the meeting, let me, um, yeah, that'd be the same thing with the fifth.
Yeah, any Wednesday.
No, the first is a Tuesday.
Yeah, oh. Okay, the first is, oh, that's right, that's right, that's a Tuesday, I'm sorry, you're right. That's, that would be all right.
Jim just turned fifteen. Thank you again, Ken.
Yes.
You're always enlightening us.
We're, we're gonna be seeing a lot of Mr. Kim this year.
Oh, yeah.
So I do have one more, two more things, uh, one involves Ken sort of indirectly, um. I got a uh letter from PVPC. Um, a couple of weeks ago, uh, talking about uh the Joint Transportation Committee. Which is how we parse out uh federal funds for highway projects in Massachusetts. And I noticed that it had uh Christian and um. And and Chris Okafor as the town's representative to the Joint Transportation Committee. And uh, I guess neither of them have been going, and of course, Chris Okafor is no longer with the town. So uh, I volunteered, since I have been involved with PVPC for so long. I at least know what all the acronyms mean. To be the town representative for to uh Joint Transportation Committee. And uh, the acting DPW director is going to be the alternate representative to the transportation, Joint Transportation Committee. Um, so that that's going to, appointment's going to go through tomorrow on the consent agenda. At the select board meeting, so I just passed that along. It's uh, part of a, an extensive planning process, so it's not like it's good, you're gonna turn on the spigot for uh federal highway dollars. Uh, but we have a couple of projects that would probably be eligible for that, they just have to get in line. We are finding that the state's actually spending a lot of money in Hadley, but it's not directly going to Hadley roads. They're uh having a lot of fun rebuilding Route Nine and. Uh, so all, somebody has to just be there occasionally to remind them that that's. Just because the money's being spent in Hadley, it's not Hadley that is the sole beneficiary. So I pass that along for what it's worth, and I think I also gave everybody a uh. An email about the drainage problem on a dare place.
Yes, yes.
So um, that's, that's just an open item, um, the um.
Were they looking in to see if that was a backup pipe or?
Yes, but they can't do it now, so it's uh, it's gonna be a spring project, uh. They're gonna have to find someone who can uh. Uh, video the pipe, see what's in there.
Let your drain.
Yeah, I don't know, uh, you're uh. Apparently, it's a, it's a specialty area and there, there was one person, here's, here's a entrepreneurial. Entrepreneurial opportunity for all you retirees, there's a, there's one guy who uh. Had a specialty in doing this, a small job, a bore inspection, I guess, um. And uh, he's not doing it anymore, so if you're, the town has to uh. Wants to get anything done, they have to contract with someone who is going to charge them for four hours of travel time. And like to, so um, there, there's.
Let your drain and chicken, we can do it reasonably priced.
Yeah, we use it on campus all the time.
Yeah.
If you need a plumbing colonoscopy.
Okay.
So uh.
Anybody, anybody who can look up a sewer pipe can look at this plate.
Okay, yeah, it is just a, a drain. So, I think that is all that I have. I have nothing else.
Well, I just wanna thank uh Mr. Dwyer for taking on that other, um. You know, putting on one more hat, and and thank you to the town treasurer for approving that.
That was a very nice letter that you wrote to the uh. Sent it to the uh, sent it to Comerford about the uh, for the Zoom stuff, that were, that was very nice, thank you.
Yeah, I'm glad if, uh, I sent the uh, I follow-up email today from her, uh. One of her uh, staff that the governor has. Um, has signed the bill now. And um, and that. And, um, and that they were, were receiving similar comments from many communities.
Yeah, I, I've gotta believe that we aren't alone in attendance being grossly better. I mean, could you, tonight, it's cold outside tonight, cold and windy. And here we are, all sitting nice and warm in our own little houses, not having to freeze our butts off going into the cold. That's very convenient.
Yep. The loser is Joe's Pizza. I know, I.
I, I make a motion to adjourn, so Zeke and I can go to Joe's.
Um, anybody else have anything? No? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And seconded.
And a second. All in favor?
I'll see ya.
Ken's opposed.
Thank you, thank you, John, thank you, Ken, and see you in two weeks. Good night.